It's 10 o'clock? Alrighty then. We're gonna wait for Shannon to... That's okay, take your time Shannon. We're good. No running. We do have a packed agenda. There's quite a few items that we need to get through. So we'll officially call the meeting to order at 10 o'clock. Ms. Ramirez, please confirm the quorum.
Yes ma'am, we have yourself, trustee Steen and vice chair Romero. We have a quorum.
... or two, which is a safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. David Ramirez to provide the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, Madam Chair Gonzalez and Board of Trustees. Happy Fiesta Week. I will go over the evacuation procedures at this time so we're prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot at the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid as needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure we are well-prepared. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We are thankful, Lord, for this day you have given us for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations to our community. We pray these things in your name. Amen. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Natalia Lopez, please proceed with public comment.
Good morning. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have one in-person speaker. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our speaker is Ms. Henrietta LaGrange.
Thank you and thank you again for allowing me to be here and it's great that we have our yearly Fiesta. But my name is Henrietta LaGrange. Belong to the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Lulac, Raza Unida. Anybody else that will have me with them, I'm on. But this morning, I'm so happy to see Mr. Garza, Mayor Nuremberg, Francine Romero, and Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Steen. I am happy to see you here this morning. May I get a smile out of you? I would like a bigger one. Huh? That's right, yeah. But what is most important here is, before I get into the agenda that I'm going to address is how special all the CPS employees are because I feel like there's not enough thank yous for them. But like, I love to see the women out there and they tell me an engineer and I say, "Chingona, that's great." And that's my slang for saying Wonder Woman in English. But I just, I see the workers and I want to get to know everybody because I feel it's important for us to know them and not let them slide like they're not important because each and everyone is important to me and I just want them to know, I may not know them. A lot of them have seen me and they might know a little about me, but not everything because there's the fearless feather behind me too. But also, thank you again because I... Who threw me the curve? Because I went to work early and when time's up... What? Oh, well, let me go real quick. Since I'm the only one here, I want to talk about the new technology program because I feel that CPS Energy is growing in the right direction. And I met Evan Mahoney, who I think is amazing and I already talked to him and I think he's got his act together. Smart, intelligent, and... but thank you.
Thank you. That was our only public comment. Thank you again, always insightful. And so the next is chair remarks, so I would like to begin with that. There is quite a few items that I will be discussing today and part of it is just what our last speaker spoke about. The employees every day here at CPS do some amazing things and I'm not quite sure if the public gets to truly understand the depth of what the employees do here at CPS. So first, I want to start with Earth Day. Today is Earth Day and the team at CPS Energy is committed to providing environmentally being responsible, affordable, and reliable electric and national gas services to our customers in the community we all come, we all call home. We, as the board, approved the Vision 2027 Power Generation Resource Plan in January 2023. The generation plan advances planned retirement dates for several fossil-fueled units. CPS exist, existing renewable resources include 1,049 megawatts of wind, 552 megawatts of utility-scale solar, and 10 megawatts of battery storage resources. San Antonio is ranked first in Texas and fifth in the nation for total solar power capacity according to the Environment, Texas Research and Policy Center's 2022 Report: Shining Cities, the top U.S. city for solar energy. There are also several rebates at customers and again, I want to stress, there are also several rebates that customers can take advantage to do their part in protecting the environment, including the following: Mow Down Smog Rebates, the Green Shade Tree Program Rebates, and the Tree Giveaways, which I love. We gave away 12,000 trees at events throughout the city. We participated again in three tree giveaways in the month of April, including this past Saturday at the City of San Antonio Earth Day at Willem Park. CPS Energy provided again 200 trees for that event. Again, I just want to stress these rebates. These rebates are available, more information at our website. Please visit our website. Mow Down Smog Rebates, the Green Shade Tree Program Rebates, and again, just look for a tree near you. So Large Public Power Council, it was here. They visit our great city, the city of San Antonio. We were able to host again the Large Public Power Council, LPPC, members meeting in April. There were 28 members, member utilities of the LPPC that represented public power from Long Island, New York, Oklahoma, Sacramento, Seattle, and our neighbors in Austin. Again, it was a wonderful opportunity for us to host them and for them to learn more about our great city and CPS Energy. Our great CEO got to speak at this event. He was also, he was on a panel with our congressman, Joaquín Castro, and Tony Gonzalez. And so again, it was a great panel discussion and a great event. Also, the team throughout, the CPS team members got to participate in legal and cyber and communication working groups. Congratulations for the team for taking on leadership roles to share best practices among other large serving public power utilities. So again, busy time right now at CPS, but again, great work by a lot of individuals here at CPS. April, National Volunteer Month. I think that's one of the best things about CPS. 3,500 employees get to volunteer across this city and our surrounding counties in some areas that really, really need support. And sometimes they just need to be inspired. They just need a hand up. And some of those nonprofits that many of our employees volunteer are The United Way, Girl Scouts of Southwest, Meals on Wheels, Girls Inc., and many more. But a really special event that I've missed two years in a row, but it's very special, took place on April the 13th. And CPS Energy volunteers participated in the 25th Annual Kids' Fish Day at Calaveras Lake. This event partners CPS Energy Fishing Buddies with youth from local nonprofits and many who have never have fished once. If you've ever seen kids fish for the first time, it's just really exciting. There's a lot of kids that don't even have a backyard, so they have an opportunity in a safe environment to be able to fish with employees and other volunteers. And so we again partnered with the United Way Dual Generation Initiative and Connecticut for a day again of fishing and other outdoor activities. I believe we have a video, so if we can show the video at this time.
See the bobber there?
Yeah.
Gotta go faster!
Look, he's in foot. Oh, you got him, bring him in!
Woo!
Keep going!
There he is!
There he is!
Good job!
He got jaws!
Yeah!
It's my lucky day!
Thank you to all the employees who volunteer and represent CPS in the community. It's not just a great event for everything that we do out there. And so it's Fiesta time, obviously. And so we want first place. Whoever designed this, congratulations. But I think the beauty of this medal again represents the board and its commitment to provide a generation mix again that meets many needs in the community. And so congratulations for those who designed it and viva Fiesta. And then again, we'll continue to give these Fiesta medals on Facebook and Twitter. So please, I wouldn't say share, but please participate by following us on our social media channels. And then the other thing about Fiesta, we want to make sure that you're also safe, please. I encourage you to use via transportation, Uber. The construction is not very nice right now downtown. It's really hard to get anywhere, but mainly just be safe. And again, congratulations for winning number one for Fiesta medal design. And I believe that's pretty much it. So lots going on at CPS. Thank you for providing me the platform to share all these wonderful things that take place at CPS Energy. So in that note, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number five. And item number five is executive session. Ms. Ramirez, if you could please bring the board back from... Well, not back from executive session. Am I missing something? Did I lose track?
I'll go ahead and take, I can go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
At this time, the board is gonna recess and do an executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, security personnel and devices under Section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, to deliberate under Texas Government Code, Section 418.183 Subsection F about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act, and to deliberate, voter take final action upon competitive matters under Section 552.086. It is 10:14 going into executive session.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, if you could please bring us, bring the board back from executive session. Go back.
It is 11:37 PM. The board has concluded executive, executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
Thank you. We will now move to item number six, approval of the consent items.
Madam Chair, a point of order?
Yes, sir.
Do you all acknowledge that any trustee acting alone has the right to remove an item from the consent agenda and have it placed as the next item for discussion and vote?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Do you all acknowledge that any trustee acting alone has the right to remove an item from the consent agenda and have it placed on the, as the next item for discussion and vote?
Shannon, can you elaborate on that, please?
At the chair's discretion, I believe that a trustee can ask for an item be pulled from the consent agenda, yes.
I don't know what item that is and we haven't had any discussions. And so as always, I'm not going to agree to it because again, I keep trying to work with you, work with everyone. And so when there's a process, you could have had the opportunity to communicate that with me prior to the meeting and I would have been more than willing to pull that item.
All right, just, just.
I'm not.
Just a few moments and, and as part of my point of order, I want to make a few observations about the consent agenda. And these are supposed to be items where there's unanimous, and that's the key word unanimous agreement, such that there's no need for any debate or discussion. These items are simply lumped together and approved by a single vote. In line with Robert's Rules of Order, consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Removal of an item from a consent agenda is quite simple. It only requires any member of the board to request its removal. No second or vote is necessary to remove an item from the consent agenda. It should be placed as the next item for discussion and vote. Removal of an item from the consent agenda is purposely simple to prevent the consent agenda from being used for the purpose of taking business that should be deliberated upon out of the discussion of the board. And according to Robert's Rules of Order, the chair can place items on the consent agenda and it only takes one board member to remove, to remove something from the consent agenda. Careful consideration should be taken to ensure what, that consent usage follows a fair, I emphasize fair, process and doesn't allow the chair to place items on the consent agenda to avoid public discussion. So I, I think that you heard from the attorney that I have the right to do that, but you're going to over, overrule that. I don't think you're able to do that, but.
I'll just note that Robert's Rules of Order are a guide for us. Opportunity was provided to every board member to provide the chair notice that an item be pulled from consent agenda. Having provided no instruction to the chair prior to the time, she's not obligated to pull it from consent agenda. I would still note, though, that if you have discussion or objection to any item on the consent agenda, you are not constricted from making those discussion points or objections simply because it's on the consent agenda and not on the regular agenda. So there is no curtailment of your ability to speak publicly about those items.
Okay, let's move on. But roll call. Motion.
I would also.
Approve the consent agenda items A through F. Number one, A, payment to the city of the city of San Antonio for March 2024. B, minutes from the February regular meeting held on March 4th, 2024. C, minutes from the March regular board meeting held on March 25th, 2024. D, resolution approving substation purchase. E, employee benefit plan statement governance. F, procurement items, number one, commodity and material goods, metal clad substation and switchgear. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
To approve the items on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the board have any further discussions before we vote?
Well, just to make the point that this goes against the whole idea of a consent agenda. If you have somebody that votes no, it's because, you know, it's supposed to be unanimous and that's, that's a legal requirement, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Dr. Romero would like to comment.
Um, I, I do agree that, that board members should be able to pull items from the consent agenda. I see it as more of an, an efficiency question, doing it ahead of time, just so staff doesn't have to be thinking, I don't know if I'm going to get called up or not. I know they're all prepared to discuss it ahead of time, but I think the, the, the request, that the request be made ahead of time, even if it's just an hour ahead of time, make sure that whatever staff member that is would be prepared to, to present and have the slides ready to go and everything. So I guess from my perspective, I, I do think that even that little bit of extra time would, maybe this would solve this issue so we, we don't have to keep talking about it.
I, I concur with Dr. Romero and it is of the discretion, you know, we can talk about Robert Rules of Order and I've been talking about it for six years. And I've been told by former chairmans that it's a practice and a guide and it's, you know, that, but it's up to the chair to make that decision. So I'll follow the chair on this.
Any further comment? Okay.
Um, I would, and, and the mayor, you don't have to answer this question, but how do you all handle it, city council?
We need a call for a vote.
All right, is, is, is our council telling me that I can, I can discuss matters that are on the consent?
I believe you already made your point and it's time, we already had comments and now we're ready for a vote.
I'll go ahead and poll the trustees having called the vote.
No, but point of order, did you, did you say I could comment on different?
The chair's closed discussion, sir. The vote's been called. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
No, no.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, again, in lieu of reading the committee reports out loud, the following report is available in your board book for review. A, Personnel Committee meeting held on March 19th, 2024. B, Operation Oversight Committee, OCC, meeting held on March 26th, 2024. C, Personnel Committee meeting held on April the 9th, 2024. Does the board have any questions or comments? I, I hear some people still thumbing through their board materials, so I'm going to want to make sure. If that's not the case, it will be accepted as submitted. We will now move to item number eight, Enterprise Resource Planning Transformation Program by Mr. Evan Mahoney.
All right, good morning, chair and trustees. Today I'll be providing you all with an update on our Enterprise Resource Planning or ERP transformation program with a specific focus on the selection of our technology partner. Our agenda, I'll start by recapping background for this program. I'll highlight some of the benefits that we expect to achieve and the approach that we've taken up to this point. Highlight the overview of our proposed technology solution and at the end, we'll be requesting your approval to proceed. Now you all have heard me talk a bit in the past about the current state of our technology ecosystem. It is quite complex and large part due to the legacy nature of many of our enterprise applications. The visual that you see here is a representation of our application ecosystem and at the core of that is our existing ERP platform, which is SAP. That technology solution was procured in 1998 with the first implementation occurring in 2001. And today we are still using that technology solution as we have for over the last 23 years. It's important to note that the current version of SAP that we are running will reach the end of standard support from our vendor in 2027 and that's at the end of the calendar year 2027. Now, as a result of a lot of the challenges that, that we have working with our legacy technology, we have deployed additional applications over time, many of which require integrations to effectively move data around our technology ecosystem. Now, as a result, our processes are somewhat fractured and often require quite a bit of manual intervention across our various workforce team members to complete their daily assignments. Now, to address a lot of these challenges, we embarked on a multi-year assessment process. This began with us bringing in some key strategic external partners that included PricewaterhouseCoopers or PWC, as well as McKinsey and Company. And they partnered with one-sixth, almost one-sixth at the time of our organization, through almost 200 workshops, looking at all of our enterprise business capabilities. As a result of that engagement, we identified a set of functional requirements that informed the future evaluation of potential technology offerings. And we also catalogued almost 2,200s of pain points or improvement opportunities that we expect to address through this transformation. Now, we leverage the result from all of that assessment work. I want to add, all of that, all of those assessment activities were funded through our 2022 rate request. That allowed us to really develop our go-forward strategy and outcomes as we think about our ERP transformation and our evolved digital transformation more broadly. Here you can see a set of strategic imperatives, which are really the lens that we use to ask ourselves if we're achieving the right outcomes as we execute this program. Now, you will see that these imperatives are equally focused on internal aspects of our organization, such as improving our operational efficiencies or providing better insights through access to data. But we're also focused on the experiences of our customers, being able to provide new variable rate structures or products and services that follow through on the commitments that we have made publicly to our customers and community. Now, all of these outcomes are anchored on our vision 2027. And as our program continues, continues to progress, we will be establishing a set of measures that allow us to gauge how we are improving in these key areas as we execute our program in the years ahead. So to achieve those outcomes, we recognized early on that we would need to build a robust partner ecosystem because we alone, as an organization, can't achieve all of those outcomes. We need to ensure that we're bringing the right partners along with us. That effort began with the technology partner and I'll be speaking in more detail to that here today. But I do want to call out that there are a number of other key areas that, that we are actively evaluating and searching for partners to help us execute. That includes the implementation of the technology that we select, as well as addressing other key areas of the program, such as independent verification and validation, which is going to provide us with some external advisory support to ensure that we're mitigating risks and achieving our program outcomes. I'll provide a bit more detail around the status of some of these other areas towards the end of our presentation here. So focusing on the evaluation of the technology, we took a very similar approach as we did in the initial assessment phase and wanted to engage. in the initial assessment phase, and wanted to engage the organization broadly to ensure that all individuals had an opportunity to take a look at the new technologies and specifically have an understanding of how they would be able to deploy those technologies as it relates to their respective job functions. So we included individuals from our linemen to analysts in our financial services organization, energy advisors that are on the phone interacting with our customers each and every day, as well as our designers that are creating the designs for new construction jobs. This evaluation process lasted 15 months. We collected feedback from all of the individuals that participated, and we tasked our evaluation leads, which represented our organization cross-functionally, to go through those surveys, evaluate, and score all of the technology solutions. Now, as a result of that, you can see how we progressed through the evaluation and selection of our technology platform. So we released our technology RFP in January of last year. As I previously mentioned, this has been a 15-month journey for us. We received 10 vendor responses, proposals to that initial RFP release. Our cross-functional team did an initial review of all of those proposals, scored them, and we advanced our top three vendors to the demo phase. The demo phase included one week for each of those three vendors to conduct a series of demonstrations with their platform that addressed 13 functional and technical tracks. In total, that effort equaled over 300 hours of demonstrations. We had a number of work streams running in parallel, and as I previously mentioned, we captured quite a bit of feedback to inform the scoring. We again evaluated those three vendors and chose the top two to advance to the next round of our evaluation, which is what we refer to as our due diligence effort. During due diligence, we took a very hard look at the underlying architecture of the technology that was being proposed. We also wanted to ensure that we conducted a deep dive relative to the security aspects of these technology solutions. We also conducted reference calls, which included customers that were both in the midst of implementing the particular technology, as well as organizations that had already successfully completed their implementation. Of course, the last thing that we considered during the due diligence effort was the overall contract terms and pricing. All of that work led us to our top vendor and today, our recommended technology partner, which is Oracle. I'll talk a little bit about Oracle and who they are and how we are looking at the partnership with them ahead. Oracle is a leader in cloud software solutions. They've got tens of thousands of organizations across the globe that are actively leveraging all aspects of their cloud technology stack and other ancillary technology services that they offer. They recently moved their global headquarters from Silicon Valley, California, to Austin, Texas, and now employ over 6,000 of their workforce in the state. Oracle also has a local presence with a regional office here in San Antonio, as well as over 2,000 of their workforce as active CPS Energy customers. I'll also add that Oracle's Education Foundation is currently investing in technology education programs through a number of our local universities, including UTSA and Alamo Colleges, among others. What we're getting with Oracle is truly an integrated, modern utilities platform that is addressing all aspects of our operations. I'll start actually on the right of this visual, focusing on our people. This new technology platform will enable the experience for our customers that not only are the things that we're doing today from a meter-to-cash perspective, but also providing better visibility into the specific personas or profiles of our customers that will allow us to interact and engage with them more effectively. As I mentioned before, we will also be able to enable new product, services, and rate structures through the use of this new technology as well. Keeping on the theme of our, of people, this solution will also effectively manage all aspects of our workforce as we think about planning our crews, looking at time and attendance, all aspects of the recruit-to-retire process. Going all the way to the left, this technology will support all of our capital, all of our capital projects and asset management efforts. Over $13 billion and growing in assets will be effectively managed in this technology platform, as well as all aspects of our field services, so the ability to actually dispatch orders to our field crews and allow them to engage with the technology when they're out completing their very important work. And of course, all of these things require full integration from a procurement, supply chain, and financial perspective. This entire technology stack is being delivered on a robust, scalable solution that will be able to grow with our organization over time. One of the other benefits that we will achieve as a result of this partnership is ongoing releases that will provide new features and functionality through the duration of this partnership. So I mentioned earlier that our current technology has been around for 23 years. This new platform will allow us to deploy updates on a quarterly basis to ensure that we are never letting technology get ahead of us moving forward. Now, I did mention some of the reference calls that were conducted. I did want to take a minute to highlight more broadly Oracle's expertise in the utility industry. You can see a number of utilities here. They actually have over 3,200 utility clients across the globe. You can see some familiar names to our north with Austin Energy, LCRA, and Encore. We're very excited to leverage the experience that Oracle has gained through all of these partnerships, so we CPS Energy can learn from them and integrate some of those best practices into our operations moving forward. So our diligent negotiation efforts have led us to our proposal today, which is a 10-year, $70 million agreement with Oracle America, Inc. This contract is fully funded, both through our program, the execution, as well as our longer-term operating budgets, and all of the funding necessary to support this investment was secured through our rate increase that went effect in February 2024. Additionally, all of these costs are fully in line with our overall program budget, which I have shared with you all in previous updates, which is $304 million in total. The remainder of that budget will support some of the other focus areas that I previously mentioned. So again, today, we're focused on technology, which is that green box. As I alluded to earlier, we are also actively evaluating strategic partners to support all other areas of this partner ecosystem. We'll be moving forward, following your approval today, with our strategy to select our implementation partner, but we are actively also evaluating proposals to provide strategic change management services, which is a key element of success, to ensure that we're thinking early on about the impact this has on our workforce and bringing them along through this change, as well as our IVNB partner, which again, will help us mitigate risks early and help to ensure that we're achieving the right outcomes as we're executing this program. Our goal is to complete building out this partner ecosystem by the end of this year. With that, we respectfully request your approval today to proceed with the purchase of ERP cloud software from Oracle America, Inc., in the amount of $70 million to support our ERP transformation program. And with that, I will answer any questions.
I move to, I move to approve the Enterprise Resource Planning Transformation Program, Madam Chair.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Before we go there, again, thank you, and of course, the floor is now open to our colleagues to speak. Dr. Mackey?
Okay, Evans. You see, I just made a motion, yes, to approve this, I support it. What is your concern on making these changes? What is your major concern? The reason I'm asking these questions, because I've been through this twice, changing systems over, adding a new system, having a system, and running two systems at the same time, but I want to hear from you. What are your concerns on making these changes? Your concerns?
Yes, sir. You know, I think for me, the critical success factors are all around change management and ensuring that our people are ready to effectively use this new technology to perform their daily job duties. You know, as we went through the technology evaluation, it was a reinforcement that at the end of the day, there are a lot of different solutions that can deliver the capabilities that we're looking for. I think our success will truly be achieved through ensuring that we're preparing our workforce to effectively use the solutions. Our failure to do that will translate to failure of this program, which is one of the reasons why we're focused early on on building out that change strategy.
You've answered my part B there, about mitigating, but my next question, if this is a major change moving forward, for this one major system to the next, what is the major change from moving from one major system to the next, moving from SAP to Oracle? What would that be? What is the major change for that? Do you see?
Yeah, so, you know, because our current SAP platform is over 23 years old, moving from our current platform to a new version of that same platform is just as complex as if we were to make a platform shift, which is what we're recommending today. One of the things that we did do as part of our due diligence effort is brought in a third party to reinforce the answer to that question and what I just shared with you, and their conclusion was just that, that the risk profile is the same. At the end of the day, sir, I think the biggest challenges ahead are around making sure that the organization is prepared to fully take advantage of the new solution.
Okay, are we staffed to support these changes? If not, what is needed for us to get there?
So we are, you know, two things will make up the staffing required for program execution. The first is bringing individuals from our current workforce into the program. That activity has already begun, and a subset of the budget, the total program budget, that $304 million, is to support the internal labor component for employees that are here today that are coming into the program to help with execution. Additionally, when we find our implementation partner, they will also be bringing a team of experts that will work with our internal subject matter experts to collectively execute the program ahead.
Okay, the next one. Change management, training, communication, managing one system while transitioning to another system. How crucial would this be to us, and what are your plans to get around this?
Yeah, very crucial. You know, as I've stated in your previous questions, you know, we recognize that change is critical, leadership support is critical, which we have support from our board, is crucial to our success, which I know we have. So I think we're taking the right steps to get in front of those things, and we will have a complete work stream within our program that is just focused on communication, training, readiness, and a subset of the training required is actually baked in to this technology partnership as well.
Okay, last question. Now that we are, now that we're getting ready to approve Oracle, moving forward with them, what are the next steps? And I mean, just, I know you briefly went over discussing some things, but I want to know what specifically are the next steps, and that would be like the implementation stage, the training, the staff development, and things of that sort. Can you give me a little timeline? Not just a timeline, but what are those procedures? And who's going to implement? Are we putting out a RFP for implementation of this? Can you explain that to me?
Yes, sir. So in the weeks ahead, we will be finalizing our strategy to secure our implementation partner. There are a few different paths that we can take advantage of to do that. One is releasing a formal RFP. Another is potentially leveraging our existing technology partner ecosystem, which you all approved a few months ago. We have a number, we have eight different partners that are in that group, but that is our focus over the next couple of weeks, is to finalize that implementation partner strategy, which will include some form of competitive process, whether it's an RFP or through our existing partner ecosystem. Change management and our independent verification and validation partner, both of those processes have already launched, and we are actively evaluating responses. So for IVNB, that was an RFP that has closed, and the team is currently our risk management committee as part of this program, is evaluating those. And then we also have bids that we have in hand to support the change management component. So for the balance of this year, finalizing the build-out of the partner ecosystem, the goal is to have that done this year, as well as continuing to ramp up building out our team. So a lot of the internal resources that I mentioned will start moving into the program, will start preparing them to help us execute as we continue to move forward. One of the other things I'll mention is for the remaining parts of this vendor ecosystem, we will remain focused on, you know, working towards our objective of 20% diversity amongst those vendors, small, local, diverse.
Thank you, dear.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Romero?
Thank you. I just have one big question and one small question, and thank you, because I know you've just been keeping us updated all along the way, ever since I've been on this board, we've been getting updates on that, and I'm sure well before I even got here. So my big question, and it kind of goes off what Dr. Mackey was saying, you've talked a lot, and it's been really impressive about all the pre-work you've done, especially everything you outlined on Slide 4, about the third-party assessments and the business case development, and all the things you've been doing ahead of time. And then on the other side, time is of the essence. So how are you balancing those two things, especially going forward?
Yeah, it's a really good question, certainly something we talk a lot about internally. You know, the, I believe the work that we have done over the last two and a half years has set us up to be able to now start putting our foot on the gas to be able to execute. We've done a great job working collaboratively across the organization to create awareness. As I mentioned, the approach that we took through both the initial assessment and the evaluation of the technology has been completely focused on the voice of our workforce, so getting them ready. I think that inherently has helped us start to build this momentum from a change management perspective, because we're engaging the right people early on. We also have some advisory services with Gartner, who I've mentioned to you all before, that have been plugged in with us and remain with us as part of the journey, and we're now ramping up the team, which as resources increase, our ability to execute also, you know, becomes a bit easier. So, you know, I think from here, the timeline that we've laid out to finalize the makeup of this partner ecosystem is certainly achievable, and my goal is by Q4 of this year, we're rolling up our sleeves and getting to work and focused on starting to deliver value to the organization through this investment as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you. My quick question, so the term of contract is 10 years, but then you talked about with our existing system, how end of support, end of standard support is in '27. So what's the difference between end of standard support and the contract term?
So the contract term for this partnership with Oracle is a 10-year term. That will include the initial execution of the program for three or four years, and then we've got the balance of the term that, you know, will support our ongoing, our ongoing use and maintenance of the new. Separate from that, we have our existing ERP platform, which is the SAP product. We are already contracted with them to provide support for that technology as it is deployed today, and we will continue to keep that support in place while we are building out and configuring and releasing the new technology solution. Our goal is to have everything ready on the new Oracle platform before we reach the end of that 2027 date for our legacy system.
Okay, but I guess what I, and that's helpful, but what I meant was, at the end of this 10-year term going forward with Oracle, does that mean that's also the end of their system support?
Understood. The initial contract term ends at 10 years. We have three one-year renewal options, and at that point, we would renegotiate a new contract with Oracle, or if the organization at the time wanted to reevaluate the market, they could certainly do that. But we've got 10 years, three one-year options, and then we would renegotiate.
And let me just add that part of our challenge with SAP is, you know, the updating process, we kind of got stuck. We weren't making the updates to SAP in a manner because it was so, what's the word? It was so specialized. We were using it not necessarily the way it was intended. In this instance, we're doing quarterly updates. So the version of Oracle that we'll be using as we go forward will be updated, you know, on a much more frequent basis.
To be clear, technology has advanced on-premise customization versus, I hate to use the term, whizzybang, but it's not whizzybang. It just means that cloud-based technology is a lot easier nowadays in how it's developed to do those upgrades. Mr. Steen?
So to begin, I want to thank our Chief Information Officer, CIO Evan Omahony, for his outstanding presentation today and for the top-notch briefing he provided me on April 11th, and I know you provided briefings to the other trustees. And I know you provided briefings to the other trustees. If we could put up Slide 3. I agree that CPS Energy is contending with an enterprise resource planning or ERP issue that's reached criticality. It's hard to fathom that our current complex ERP system, a wide-ranging software system that's used to manage day-to-day activities such as accounting, procurement, project management, risk management, and compliance, supply chain operations, and so on, is close to a quarter of a century old, and that our vendor has told us it'll cease supporting it in 2027. So I concur that we must complete this transformation over the next four years. Please put up Slide 13. The cost of this transformation program is going to be substantial. As we can see at the top of the right column, your overall program budget is $304 million. But of course, what you're asking us to approve today is about a fifth or 20% of that $304 million, and so specifically, a $70 million 10-year contract with Oracle. So please put up Slide 8. As your presentation today highlights, Mr. O'Mahony, you've overseen, and you use the words deliberate and thoughtful process, and I'd add methodical and meticulous process that's culminated in your recommendation today that Oracle be selected as our technology partner, and so I'm good with what you're asking us to approve today. What I'm not good with is the fact that over the past two years, CPS Energy has committed itself to expending significant sums of money on projects that are not necessary or could be deferred, and but one example is the STEP program. Two years ago, CPS Energy had the opportunity to ease the financial pressure on its customers by at a minimum pausing the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Initiative called STEP. It was originally a 10-year program that staff announced had reached its goal two years before. Nevertheless, it was decided to plow ahead with it, notwithstanding that I, as well as a plurality of the RAC members and three city council members favor the pause.
Is this germane to the topic that we're discussing?
STEP is not up for approval today.
Mayor, you have asked me in the-
I really don't have time to relitigate STEP every single board meeting.
But you asked me at a recent board meeting about what projects that-
Can you tell us how this is germane to the approval of the ERP, please?
The cost of extending the program was pegged at $70 million a year for five years, or $350 million. This is on top of the $800 million already spent on the program. Unbelievably, CPS Energy is now on track to spend a billion dollars on STEP.
Just going to pause for a minute.
I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Steen finish his points, and then we're going to go straight into voting.
It won't take very long.
That's okay, Mr. Steen, go ahead.
Just since our last board meeting, and Mayor, I will say this, you've asked me in public here about programs that I would identify where we're-
Mr. Steen, if we could stick to your talking points, I think it would be very beneficial.
Yes, ma'am. Just since our last board meeting, management has announced two additional costly commitments. First, CPS Energy management announced that it's purchasing Talon Energy's natural gas plants in Corpus Christi in Laredo for $785 million. Cost to bring these plants into the CPS Energy fold may well end up driving the cost closer to $1 billion. Second, CPS Energy management issued a request for proposal for a new construction service center campus on West Highway 90. The cost of this discretionary, arguably deferrable, project will surely run in tens of millions of dollars.
Mr. Steen-
This is the summary of other projects, well outside the agenda.
Mr. Steen, with all due respect, we continue to provide to the platform, and we go off topic. We can easily sit here and say, when I was a freshman, we bought this building, we could have invested in this system. I mean, we could go back and forth in previous leadership decision-making, whether they chose a CEO, whether they bought, purchased a building, whether they bought this piece of land. Let's focus on what we need to. And by the way, Mr. Steen, you always have the opportunity to speak with me directly, to add things, address your concerns, and you're not the only one concerned about strategic investments. I've made it very clear that it will continue to be a priority. We have a session coming up, and those items will be discussed. If we cannot stick to specifically what you want to address, and you keep sliding in things that have no merit for what we're voting on, then I'm going to, again, refuse, not even refuse, just not provide to the platform.
We're voting on, in essence, a $304 million item.
They say yes or no. If you believe that all the investments here to date-
Madam Chair, I've got the right, it'd take a few more minutes to express my thoughts on that.
Okay, but by the way, it's not just me, it's legal counsel and our mayor. It's not just me just saying, Mr. Steen, you can't speak. I've always provided to the platform, and again, we're here, you have a really, you have an opportunity to say yes or no.
So here's a snapshot, and this would just be just a minute or two, of my overall concern. As our CEO Rudy Garza has said repeatedly, there are only two fundamental ways to pay for all this spending, and that's by taking on more debt, or by increasing the base rate on CPS Energy's customers. In both instances, there are storm warnings, let's take our debt. At our last board meeting, CFO Corey Kojinski revealed that CPS Energy's debt has swelled to $6.9 billion.
Need to make political, personal statements. At this point, let's call for a vote.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, thank you very much. If we can move on to the next item.
And I would like the courtesy of being able to talk about this. This is very germane to what we're talking about.
May I make a point here? That is germane when we're talking about the budget. We're talking about the approval of a contract, far different. If you have the platform to talk about every way we spend money in the CPS, you're welcome to bring this up again, but we have a specific agenda, Trustee Steen, and some of us have other things to do.
Mayor, people know that I'm very concerned about our indebtedness, and they may ask the question, why is John Steen voting for this? It's a $304 million item, in essence.
If we can go to the next item, Mr. Steen, again, you have the ability to reach out to me for all your concerns, you choose not to. You choose not to participate in the process, and then you judge us in person, and that's not right. Let's move on to the next item. If we can go ahead and move to item number nine, which is the annual audit financial statements.
Good afternoon, Chair. So I'm going to do an introduction, and then let our auditors come up. I want to introduce Andy Crouch. He's the new KPMG audit partner on our engagement this year. We had the retirement of our existing partner, Caroline Garcia. Mr. Crouch has over 18 years' experience in this work, and he also works with various other multinational energy entities. So we're excited this year to have him on board. As you know, the auditing process performed by KPMG is so that our financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and ultimately present fairly the financial position of CPS Energy for our operations. It is also required by our bond ordinance to have an external financial audit every year that lays out this work. This is going to be the third year of KPMG in the four-year contract we have with them. And as Andy will mention, for fiscal '24, the audit revealed that CPS Energy again achieved a clean opinion and had a successful audit. Further, this audit saw no corrected or uncorrected misstatements or any deficiencies. So, all around, a very good year. I do want to thank Andy and the KPMG team for their time and professionalism. I also want to thank Chris Carmona from Shriver and Carmona and Company, the minority firm that also partnered on this engagement. And then lastly, a big thanks to the CPS Energy team that worked countless hours on this engagement as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Andy and let him step through his presentation regarding this year.
Wow, I think he covered my whole presentation right there with that. Thanks, everybody. No, I'm just kidding. Andy Crouch, sorry, I'm new to the engagement, so nice to see everyone here. Like you said, I've got Logan Vayardis here with me, our lead manager, and Chris Carmona. And before I jump into the presentation, I thought I'd let Chris say a couple words.
I'm much shorter than Andy, so, thank you. Hi, everyone, Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. I just wanted to come up and say a few words, that it's been a pleasure working with KPMG. It's our third year, so we're really getting in our stride. I have a wonderful team, Jordan Galbreth and Richard Martinez, who's been on the team since year one. So, it's been great to work with KPMG. We've learned a lot, and continue to build our skill set in working with a large, global, national, and national firm. So, thank you CPS Energy for the opportunity to allow firms such as our firm to participate in audits such as this. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. So, starting off with our presentation, this slide, I just wanted to touch on a few things. We're always trying to improve the quality and the efficiency of our audit year after year. This is year three, as Corey pointed out. First year is always a struggle, trying to understand the entity. Second year is a transition. Third year is really, we really hit our stride. And I think this year, even though it's my first year on the engagement, the teams really hit our stride, and I think we see that through, like, we'll talk about the fact that there's no misstatements this year, no uncorrected misstatements, no findings really to report, so things are going really well, and so the quality, the efficiency is really improved. When I talk about audit results, so, outstanding matters, we're finalizing substantive procedures, they're substantially complete. I talked to the team this morning, there's just a few things that we're trying to finalize, tie out the final financial statements, get through those reviews, and then the receipt of the management rep letter, which will come later this week, that we provided to management, but I don't expect any issues with those things. Auditor's report we'll go over here in a little bit, but as Corey mentioned, it's unmodified, it's a clean report, so no issues there. Uncorrected, corrected misstatements, there are none this year, so nothing will pop up in these slides that wasn't corrected or was not corrected. And then outside of that, there's nothing else from an audit result perspective that I needed to bring up to the trustees today. I'm going to turn it over to Logan for a second.
Hi, good morning. So as Andy mentioned, it was a clean audit, we had a great year this year. This slide, just another overview essentially, you'll see a lot of X's, because it was such a great year, there's not a whole lot to report on. We'll get into the auditor's report here, significant accounting estimates, and then the group audit engagement considerations. So again, here are things that were required to communicate to you. Consultations, we didn't have any this year, and then also illegal acts or fraud, there were no actual or suspected illegal acts or fraud. The auditor's report, as Andy mentioned, it was a clean opinion this year, so this slide just represents that KPMG doesn't express an opinion over management's discussion and analysis. Hold it back. Thank you.
The next four slides are, cover the significant accounting estimates, and I'm not going to go through each one individually unless you want to, but what I'll say is, the estimates are consistent with what they've been in the prior years, and on each slide, we include the inputs or the factors such as discount rate or other things that we consider subjective. And when we consider it subjective, that means that we give it a little more attention, including using specialists or others to come in and make sure that those are reasonable, and that it wouldn't cause a material misstatement in the financial statements. So, all I'll say is, after evaluating all these, including with our specialists, we considered all the estimates to be reasonable to the financial statements. Group audit considerations, again, this is consistent with prior years. We do consider a group audit, we use the STEP Knock Engagement Team for the South Texas Project, sorry, who, I think we've divulged this previously, is a KPMG engagement team, but they have provided all the reporting and the financial statements at this point, and there were no findings from that engagement. Independence communications, there's just two things, and I always like to point this out, that are free, that we provide to the company. One is our accounting research platform that the company can use, the other is a learning portal that the company can use for CPE and other types of things. But with this and everything else we've looked at, we remain independent. I know it says as of April 15th, but as of today, we remain independent. Here, laying out the professional fees, you see, it went down a little bit from last year, but this has all been agreed to with management. We haven't seen any divergence from what we had previously agreed to. And then the last screen here is just the inquiries that we've made with management, just letting the trustees know what some of the questions were, but we had no issues come out of these inquiries. And with that, take any questions that trustees have.
Okay, does the board have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
So, Corey Kojinski, congratulations on a unmodified and clean report. Mr. Crouch, appreciate your diligent work on our audit and for your presentation today. How long have you been with KMPG?
Over 18 years.
And then, and how long have you been an auditing partner?
Seven years.
Seven years. And how much of your auditing work is done for utilities?
Quite a bit. I served quite a few, especially when I was in Houston, quite a few utility companies.
Oh, good, all right.
And I was in Houston for 10 years, basically serving utility companies.
All right, so, and are you often the lead presenter to the Board of Directors or Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, just recently.
Yeah.
Carolina, it was before, and actually, she did the work.
Here's what I want to ask you. When you present annual audited financial statements for various boards, doesn't the process ordinarily conclude with a vote by the board to accept the annual audited financial statements?
For public boards, it typically does.
Yes.
Like publicly issued financial statements.
And a question, is it required any way on your end?
Yeah.
To sort of close out things?
No, that culminates in the representation letter that we receive, saying that we're comfortable with issuing the financial-
Okay, so, what I wanted to ask Mr. Garza, is there a reason that this item has not been agendized today for a vote by the board?
I don't believe a vote is required, Trustee Steen.
So, I was curious about this, because I recall that we had voted on it in the past, and so I examined the minutes going back seven years, starting in 2017, and during our April or May board meeting each of those years, we received a presentation from our outside auditor regarding the annual audited financial statements. And so this board voted to accept those statements, and I could go the years 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, but starting in 2022 through today, this matter has not been agendized for a board vote, and the transition came in 2021, between 2021 and 2022. And so in 2021, Paula Gold Williams was our CEO, and Carolyn Schelman, our general counsel, but by 2022, the first date we didn't vote, the change had been made to you, Mr. Garza and Ms. Ramirez. And so it was, since it was done on your watch, if you could enlighten me on why the change was made, and then just a question, is this an oversight, or was it done for a reason?
No, sir, I mean, I, go ahead.
The reason that the practice changed is that, in the years that you listed where the vote was taken by the board, there was a separate governance requirement for the board to accept the audit results, to implement those results in the incentive plan that was then in place. That incentive plan has not been in place since the years you listed, so board voting is no longer required.
So that's an excellent answer, and I put you on the spot by asking about it, so I accept that. Thank you.
Okay, no, any further discussion? All righty. Thank you very much for the presentation on the annual audit financial statements, and thank Ms. Caroline for her excellent work, and the entire team. The next item on the agenda is item number 10, which is CEO recognition.
Okay, so today, I'm going to start out with a really great recognition, and we're going to bring everybody up. gonna bring everybody up together, but I want to start off by recognizing, you may have seen in the news, and we did a number of social media posts regarding two employees, UIO foreman Letty Ortiz and operator Miranda Menchaca, who represented San Antonio at the first-of-its-kind all-female caterpillar women in construction competition. Miranda and Letty are two of three female machine operators employed at CPS Energy, with Letty being a foreman, of course. The challenges tested their technical knowledge, precision, speed and accuracy, along with safety operations. So, we try to support our employees in all types of skills competitions, because not only is it a great representation of what our employees bring to the table, but it's a way to support employees in skills that they have learned. In Letty's case, how many, how long you been around, Letty?
31 years.
31 years of operating machinery for CPS Energy. And so, I know that the chair, you know, I think reposted and made some comments on social media about the competition, but we're real proud of both Letty and Miranda for representing us. So how about a round of applause for our two female employees? In addition, April 18th was line workers appreciation day. To celebrate, we're highlighting our line workers rodeo team, who obviously were back in lineman rodeo season again, and they competed in Lafayette at the 21st Annual Line Workers' Rodeo. Total of 17 states competed in the rodeo, that's the, that was the American Public Power Association competition, consisting of journeymen and apprentices on at least 200 different teams. Just for context, our line workers are responsible for installing and maintaining more than 8,184 miles of overhead lines, 6,856 miles of underground lines, 1,555 miles of transmission lines, that's more than 16,000 miles of electric transmission distribution lines, covering CPS Energy's 1,515 square miles of service area. They also work hand-in-hand with other first responders to restore power to homes and businesses in their time of need. This includes safely handling energized lines using specialized techniques and equipment backed by thorough training and protective equipment. And as you all know, we had quite a storm that came through this past Saturday evening into Sunday morning, and by the time it rolled in around, you know, late into the evening, probably around 9:00 or 10:00 Saturday night, and by the time I woke up on Sunday morning, all of our power was restored. And our folks just do a great job overall. So we want to thank these line workers every day for the work they do for our community, please joining me in recognizing both groups for their amazing work that they do every day, and for being such great representatives of CPS Energy. Thank you all.
Again, just thank you, you know, we have a citizen who comes every board meeting, and she mentions constantly about, and it's not constantly, every day, every time she has an opportunity, she mentions about her great employees, and this is just another example. And when our residents recognize it, it even means more. So, again, thank you for those citizens who recognize the work that our employees do on a daily basis. Oh, Dr. Romero wants to say something.
I'm just in awe of people who can do this kind of work, and for Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Menchaca, I could, I don't think I could ever do this kind of work. But as a woman, it's just so meaningful to me that they did this. It just, and I can't say it well enough, but I know, like, during Women's Month, we say things, and just seeing these women who can go out and do this, and run heavy machinery, and just not, not play by the old rules, it's, it just, it means a lot to me, it was a big inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you for those kinds of words, Dr. Romero. Even being chairwoman is one of those things where, you know, we don't always get the same support, but we keep at it, and we kind of, we're at the table, and we try to make a difference so that future women can take, not only be machinists, or take any job here at CPS, but also be a chairwoman one day and a trustee, so thank you for those kind of words. If we can go ahead and move to item number 11, which is review the action items.
Yes, ma'am, we had an open action item from Trustee Steen to include the reason no for a vote on a prior agenda item. Those minutes were approved today, so that item is closed. We had a chair request and Trustee Steen request for items to be addressed in executive session, those were both addressed today, so those action items are closed, and I had no new-
Can you repeat the last one, the last two?
Yes, you had a request for an item to be covered in executive session.
And it was a request directed at you, not the chairwoman, right? Just to be clear.
You are the chairwoman. You asked me to cover an item in executive-
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Steen did.
And I covered it. Trustee Steen asked for a separate item to be covered in executive session, it was also covered, so both items are closed.
All right.
I apologize for the confusion. Today, we had eight action items from executive session, no action items from open session today.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All righty, everybody, thank you very much, great conversation and great big items that we agreed on and disagreed on, so good meeting.